Well, like always, I jumped the gun just a little bit. I'd like to welcome everybody here to our meeting. We have been gone for an extra couple of weeks here for July the 4th break. And we appreciate you being with us tonight. And we will now with the regular program. Misses, we have a couple of additions to the agenda. One is to approve the bond for the financial director issued by Penn National Insurance for $200,000 effective July the 13th. If there is no objections, I'll add this item to the consent agenda as AK. And I have one more addition to the consent, which is to add a closed session for existing litigation. And that'll be AL. That under regular gen- oh, I'm sorry. Yep, that's right. Do we have any other additions or deletions from the agenda? Do I have?
Mr. Chairman, I move with it. We approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Yeah. I have a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Mike, is that a second?
Second.
All in favors?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
I'm in.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item will be to consider the approval of the minutes on the June 20th. Is there a motion to approve in these minutes? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carolyn, do we have any public comment? At this time, Rowan County Planning Technician Pamela Ely. I haven't got it right. Thank you. Will present the staff report for three road name requests. Following the staff report, the commissioners will conduct one public hearing. That will include all three requests.
Okay, so I have two new requests that I want to present, and then we have the one that was held over from the meeting, the last meeting. Does it matter which order I do them in?
I'm acting like an attorney. I don't know what I'm talking about. I don't think that there's any.
I'll do the new ones first. So the first request we have is for a drive off of Performance Road, which is off of Wilkson Road, and its proposed name is Packard Drive. The reason for naming this is a commercial development. They're going to be putting a third structure within that one parcel. And so that has to be named per ordinance. The owners came up with the name, and it was submitted to GIS and 911 and agreed upon. So that was okay. The second one is a driveway off of Pool Road, the 100 block. The proposed name is Ancestry Trail. There are currently two property owners utilizing this driveway with a lot of family members that have inherited this land. And so we were looking to go ahead and name the driveway, especially since they're so far back off the road. The homeowners are the ones that brought back the petition with the name that was went through all the channels and was agreed upon. We did receive one opposed letter to this renaming from Harold Johnson. Evidently Harold and his niece Morgan own a property together. Morgan signed the petition to rename, and Harold sent me a letter that he didn't want to rename, basically because of his bad health and what all it was going to take for him to have to change such address. And then the final piece of business was the continuation for the drive off of Jones Farm Road. We had suggested a name as Seals Creek Trail. And that was found to be in Aridale County, very close by. The neighbors had suggested Jones Farm Road. I took that back to 911. That was approved as that could be used. So we would like to change that to Jones Farm Road. Any questions?
All right. At this time, I will open the public hearing to receive comments from anyone wishing to address the board regarding the proposed road name. The names of Packard Drive, Ancestry Drive, and Jones Farm Road. If you, you come to the podium, please, sir.
My name is Guana Davis. My address is 961 Confederate Avenue, Country Club. I'm glad to be here today. I hope you will consider the name. That we're looking at ancestry. You know, we have a lot of family here. And a lot of property, probably over 20 plus acres, all right? And it's all plotted up, but you know, my family has grown up here, and many of us have have gone on to college, have created our own businesses. We have dental offices. We have many different businesses, electricians, plumbers. And we've, we've added a great deal to this community. And so for that reason, we still own a great deal of plan of land that is there. And so for that reason, we just like to, you know, name that, I guess we call it a driveway, to have access to our property as we began to even develop more on that property. So for that reason, I'd like for you to consider the name that was proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? There's no one else. I hereby close the public hearing. I will now enter a motion to approve the three road names as presented by staff, which again are Packard Drive, Ancestry Trail, Jones Farm Road. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, folks, for being with us tonight. And I know this is very interesting stuff, but if you feel like you are ready to go, you go anytime you want to. You don't have to hang around until we close it out. As long as you want. At this time, our Assistant Planning Director Shane Stewart will present PEO 222. Welcome, Mr. Stewart.
Vice Chair. Because this gets pulled up here. The request from Richard Jackson and Darius Massey for the property at 3811 Old Moxville Road. And the property is located here, outlined in red that you see on your screen. And it's about a two acre tract. Currently, there's a home under construction. Photos from 21, you can see the proximity. This is Old Moxville Road here. We're due north of Ridge Road. And this is Ellis Park, about 500 feet north of Ellis Park here. So Mr. Jackson has submitted a permit to exceed the noise ordinance for an event on the Labor Day weekend, September 3rd. It would be from 5:00 PM till 10:00 PM. It's actually the third annual Labor Day event at this location here. And per the information received, it is a free event with food and beverage and have some live entertainment here. And the home that's under construction, you see in the, about the center of the property, there's an existing drive here that leads to the home. A stage would be set up a little bit north of the center of the property. Speakers would be flanking the stage and facing south towards the park. Couple of tents proposed for the folks there and also for food and whatnot. Three porta-johns and some wash stations here off to the left. And then surrounding the site would be just open parking for the visitors. And Mr. Jackson anticipates about 150 to 200 guests. And taking the site plan and it's being as generous as possible, staff expects or you may could get about 64 vehicles if you really jammed them in nose to bumper within this facility. If a little bit more was opened up and you got more creative, maybe you can get a few more. So, and that would be, if you do the math, that's about three people per, per car if you're hitting the 200 mark. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But per Mr. Jackson's information, he will have four attendees that will assist folks in directing parking. We'll touch base on this location here in a minute, but this is the only existing drive. You could come across the road, but you might not want to do that in a car. A or of a clearance vehicle, SUV or truck could make that movement, but he does have plans to make some improvements here, which we'll talk about shortly. Few pictures to give you some context of the area. The upper images are from the existing access point looking north and south on Old Moxville. Has good sight distance there. A little bit of an incline on the drive in the lower left, but nothing too extreme. And looking back down the drive leads to the home under construction. So all that parking that we talked about would be along the front and then wrap around the home on both sides here. And on the top left with the road to our back, looking at the home, all this would be open for parking. See the grade change from the road up here. This is facing south at the northernmost part of the property, looking back south. And on our lower images, this would be parking area around the home on both sides here, just to give you an idea of the full scope of what would be used for that.
And this is property that he owns?
The owner, I think, is listed as his son, but collectively it's family property, Mr. Massey and Mr. Jackson. There was an event request that was for a rezoning and be a permanent venue, a commercial structure. And the, at the planning board level, Mr. Jackson decided to withdraw and not pursue that. Of course, that would be, you know, open any day of the week in a commercial venue. No, it's still all right. It's not been changed. Yes, sir. Yes, but it did not, they did not pursue it. On the upper images, you have MD McCullough. This is from right to left. So the McCullough residence or property here and the Castillon Residence, 3820, 3830. And then from the Castillon Residence over to the Fries at 3840. Those are homes directly across the road. There's a few others, but that's the one that's most immediate. And then it's not identified in this image, but the Jordan property is just beyond the trees here. This is the access point for pipeline right away there. As with any request, we do try to capture, and one of the components of site history is any calls to emergency services. This has come up before at the planning board meeting too. So we captured the calls for anything related to a party disturbance, et cetera. This dates back to 2020. Mr. Jackson has in his attachment there addressed the site history and some of the things that they've worked on last two years ago and last year in preparation for this request here. So on a Saturday, you had a few loud party disturbance calls around the seven o'clock hour, and then you see a few more here continuing on to the 11 o'clock. And on Monday, some more here during the seven up to almost nine o'clock. And that was prior to the planning board request for that rezoning. So in this event here in 21 was before, or excuse me, after the planning board request, and there was a few other calls and not sure if Mr. Jackson wasn't aware, but he was issued a citation. So from that point, he's, has a new plan to address and fully aware of the noise ordinance standards that need to come here to ask for a permit to exceed and also some of the pointed out concerns from the sheriff's deputies, don't park on the road, keep it all on the site. And those concerns also addressed from the neighbors. So not to capture all the neighbor comments, but the primary concerns were noise and then parking along the road, any blockage there. But again, the attached summary from Mr. Jackson references his plan to address this. And the thing that staff stressed to him, which he may want to touch on here, is just the logistics with those attendees that are parking folks is to ensure what your plan will be when you're full. And making sure nobody parks on the, the edge of the road. So he may touch on those here in a minute. He is present here.
Shane, can you go back, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, down at the bottom, 57B2 explosion. Can you give us any idea of what that was all about?
Can't confirm, but I believe there was thought that may have been Tannerite that was used. Tannerite? I don't know a lot about it. It's a some, it's happened before in many places, the county, just I couldn't explain it. Just makes a noise.
Okay, thanks.
But I can't confirm that's what it was. All right. And for public notice, we typically put a sign up, which you see here. We did stretch out to 300 feet around the site for notices. Here's the folks that got letters, 11 total. And let's see, received one phone call from a property owner that also submitted a Civic Plus request that you saw via email, I think the clerk put in your packet. So that's included in one other that I believe are in the same address. So as typical, the next you would hear from Mr. Jackson for any comments he'd like to share, then open this up for public comment. It's not a public hearing, but public comment for anybody online. I think we had someone that may have some handicap challenges, so they may be present on a call. So definitely open it up for that. Maybe that email suffice, but nonetheless. So I think I touched on everything else. You do have in your options, conditions that you can add. I didn't touch on all the criteria. We have 10 that's covered in the report, and I think one of the most important ones would be any, any site history with the applicant. So Mr. Jackson's aware of that, and that's why he's addressing these concerns with the previous two events with his new plan of action. Any questions of the board?
All right, at this time, we will open the floor to receive comments from anyone who wishes to speak on this matter. And if Mr., if the owner is here and he would like to speak, this would be a good time to do it.
Mr. Chairman, I would like the owner to come forward because I have a few questions for him, please.
Welcome, Mr. Jackson.
Hello, everyone. How y'all doing? My name is Richard Jackson. I speak on behalf of my son, Darius Massey. Environment. Fighting good food and live entertainment. Costs. Salisbury Lions Club. I value giving back. Awesome, family friendly events, and I'm hoping all families counted only two is those being parking. First year, 2000. And the parking. Second year, we received similar complaints and was care, a noise permit and improved parking. I was cited for not having a noise ordinance permit and was reminded to do so in the future. In the effort to elevate issues from previous years, those being noise and parking. I've hired Mr. Chad Dillard, who specializes in grading. He would be leveling the land and removing shrubbery and small trees to provide an increased parking availability. He has stated that the land provided, he can make over 80 to 70, anywhere from 70 to 80 cars parking inches availability and provide inches as well as the exit with the help of four individuals acting as attendants to direct parking. In compliance with the 10 o'clock PM noise ordinance, we will be reminding attendees that the event will end in 30 minutes. Music will end promptly at 9:45. We will be directing traffic to ensure everyone leaves the premises as quickly and safely as possible. And unfortunately, at the point, we would be forced to turn people, I mean, if there's anything like we run out of parking. Run out of parking. We will unfortunately, at that point, we would have to force and turn people away. Uh, if we notice them trying to park on other people's lands or properties, we would be forced to call 911 and ask for assistance and for these people to be removed. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Jackson.
Yes, ma'am.
Tannerite. Uh, binary explosive targets used for firearms practice and sold in kit form. Uh, it says the targets comprise a combination of oxidizers and a fuel primarily aluminum powder that is supplied as two separate components that are mixed by the user. So my question is, um, the explosions that you've had before, were those Tannerite targets?
I have no idea. Um, we did hear some explosive in the far distance that was further down past on the other side of what a pipeline is at. We did hear some. Um, but no one on my property or even at my event don't even know what Tanneric is. I mean, it's just being familiar. I don't even know what it is.
Are you planning to allow firearms to be at your party?
Firearms?
Firearms at your party.
No, ma'am. Being that this was the second event that we had, and we trying to get the third one by crossing all our Ts and dotting all our Is. There has never been an argument. There has never been a fight. There has never been a shooting. I'm a well-respected man and my community. And we have never had none of that occur at my expense. Everybody just have fun. Enjoy the live entertainment. Eat, enjoy, and have fun. That's what it's about.
Um, well, personally, I would prefer that you not have Tannerite explosions too, because that can set off, loud noises can set off other things. Not that you would intend them to happen, but we've had a few in the county in the past. And another question I have for you is usually when we have events with as many people, I believe, um, we have an off-duty officer that's hired to um, help protect the citizens and make sure everything's going okay.
I have no problem with hiring an officer if that's what the county wants. I have no problem with that. I have no problem at all.
Okay.
I would, I would like that. Um, I would love that.
I don't, I don't believe that is a requirement in the county. AD's about, Sheriff says no.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Would you be okay if we requested that you cut your music off at nine o'clock instead of 10? The reason I ask is that's the area that I live in down that road. And everybody from literally from the corner of Ellis Crossroads to the corner of Hannah Ferry Road go to my church. And they've all expressed issues with the music being so late. I think, you know, nine o'clock, it gets, it's dark. I ride by that venue every day. It's got no lighting on the outside. So once it gets dark, I don't, I don't see how you're going to negotiate getting around to start with. So would you have a problem, we've made that a requirement, that nine o'clock, we turn the music off?
I have no problem with that.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions or comments? All right, at this time, then the board will need to make a decision. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We appreciate you coming forward. Board will need to make a decision to approve or approve with conditions. Table or deny this request? I make a motion to approve with the conditions that the music be terminated at nine o'clock. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to amend the amendment to add no explosives.
I think he's okay. Mr. Jackson, I think you're okay with that. You're not planning on using any dynamite or anything there, are you? We will add that as.
Well, then I'll, I'll second the amended amendment.
All right. Have we got a second to your amendment?
It's them.
Well, we had a first amendment and
First motion, yeah.
First motion.
Second to the motion. Second to the motion.
The second her motion to amend. So we now have. A motion and second, and then we will vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Jackson, keep, keep the dynamite away from over there. I think we'll be all right. At this time, we will hear a request for P E O three two two from Planner Aaron Poplin. Welcome, Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. So we have a request, P E O three twenty-two from Cynthia Anderson. She's requesting a permit to exceed for a concert of. At the. Picnic Shelter in Fisherman's Cove. For July twenty-third, which is coming Saturday from six PM to nine PM. It's a concert with band members from the local community and they're looking to. Hold a small event to raise a little bit of money for charity. They're expecting about fifty people to show up. And this event is something that the homeowners association has already given the okay to them for, but they need a permit to exceed. Or they're seeking a permit to exceed from the commissioners. But with the permit to exceed, there's, there's ten criteria to take a look at. So the first one is the timeliness of the application. We received this application back in June fifteenth, so a little bit more than a month before the hearing. Then it's the nature of the request. It's a live music. Located at the shelter owned by the homeowners association. The previous experience with the applicant. This is our first experience working with them. The time of the event, it's on Saturday, July twenty-third from six to nine PM. The other activities in the vicinity. This is on the same day as the Dragon Boat Festival, but this does start after the Dragon Boat Festival and it's. At a, it's a good bit away from that part of the lake as well. This is off of St. Matthew's Church Road. As opposed to being off a long ferry. The frequency of the event, this is the one event being requested. The cultural or social benefit of the event. It's expected to attract up to about fifty people and then part of the proceeds will go to the charities of the band member's choice. And then the effective activity on adjacent residential area. This is inside Fisherman's Cove subdivision, so there are a couple of adjacent residences. And all the residents that are adjacent or within a hundred feet have been, have received notice in the mail along with a sign posted on site. And there's the previous violations by the applicant. We didn't find any in the past. And then number ten is the adjoining property owners are noticed within seventy-two hours of the event. And they receive notice ten days prior to our hearing today, in both in the mail and on site. The only other thing to kind of add is this is a little bit atypical than our normal permit to exceed since it is within a neighborhood. But since it is open to the public, they are allowed to apply for a permit to exceed. And then if you have any other questions, both me and the applicant are here.
Aaron, you said that the homeowners association has approved this?
Yes.
Good.
Cynthia is part of the homeowners association. She's brought it to their board's attention and they've already okayed the event.
Okay, great.
Would the applicant like to come forward at this time?
We're just a worship band. Cindy is his wife. And we go around and play for charities. We've done Sweet Street downtown Kannaples for over ten thousand people. We don't make no money. We just do it for the love of Christ and that's all we're here for. We did the county commission thing at the flea market.
Freedom Rally.
Yeah, Freedom Rally. We done that. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Vernon Patrick Keith Anderson.
Let me say thank you for doing what you're doing.
I bless you.
All right. Thank you for coming up. Is anyone else? We'll open the floor to anybody else that might have a comment. Who did we decide was in the back? I didn't, I don't think I asked about that earlier. Man in the phones.
I'm in here. Any guests wishing to speak during public comment may do so by using the raise hand feature within Zoom app. Or by pressing star nine if joining by phone. We have no one.
All right, Randy, thank you very much. Fishers, do you have any questions or comments about this?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that it's kind of odd for me, but I used to be on the HOA at Fisherman's Cove. And it's a very nice community down there. It's a, it's a close-knit community. Everybody down there is always very, very nice and I don't think this would be an issue at all. And what's really good about it is it's. Like. Aaron said, it's off by itself. It's at the end of the lake. You know, you're not going to have any traffic issues. You're not going to have any. Any fireworks and these kind of things. So to me, this is an ideal location and I really think we should approve this. And I'll make a motion to that effect.
Any other comments at this point in time? All in favor of approving this?
Aye.
Aye. Wilson, would you please pay close attention to this next matter, please? Fifteenth Annual Conference Business Session of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Will be held on Saturday, August the thirteenth at two PM. Each county will be entitled to one vote on these items that come before the membership. The board is asked to select its voting delegate. Is there any nominations?
Nominate Judy.
That's her second.
I nominate Mike.
I second Judy. I was delegate last year, so I'm.
Okay. That's fine. I'll serve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy. We appreciate you taking that on.
Got a vote.
Got a vote?
Mike, Mike made the motion. I second. We just got to vote.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Now for the good stuff. This time, I'd like to take just a moment to congratulate Anna Bumgardner. For being selected as Rowan County's new finance director. And Anna, we will probably have a motion next month about a raise for the commissioners. And we suggest you might find money somewhere.
Okay, we'll see what we can do.
Working with the county, has been working with the county since July the twenty-first. And we're excited to have her working with us in this new role.
Thank you. Thank you. So, as you can see, we have our financial reports. And I will say that these were prepared by Jim because they had to be submitted. Prior to me going into this office, so. I will go over what was prepared. So. June twenty twenty-two expenditures are at one hundred and fifty-two point six million. This is about six point six million increase over June of twenty-one or roughly four and a half percent. The next slide, please. Oh, go ahead. You go ahead.
Are there, is there an explanation as to why we're six million dollars ahead?
I do not have an explanation for that, but I can see what I can find out. It looks like we've kind of trended on that trend all year though, if you.
If I remember correctly, Jim had told us it had to do with the COVID dollars coming into the budget.
That could quite possibly.
I'm thinking that's probably where it is.
Right. It looks like it's been on that trend for quite a while. I would probably agree with that, but I will make sure.
Thank you.
Yes. So the next slide is the revenue. So we're at one hundred and fifty-nine point two million. And this is about three point eight million increase from June of twenty-one or about two point four percent. Any questions on that one? Next slide. Is our property tax collections. And we are at around ninety million. This is about one point two million over June of twenty-one. We have a current collection rate of. Ninety-eight percent, which is a slight increase over June of twenty-one, which was at ninety-seven point seven seven. The next slide is sales tax. And as of March, this was still very strong, so we're at twenty-six point nine million through March of twenty-two. So that's three point six million or roughly. Almost sixteen percent increase over March of twenty-one, so. We do kind of expect this to maybe start not being such a large gap moving forward, but right now it's still, it was still very strong in March. And then there's one more on sales tax, and this is the. The monthly sales tax. So this, this chart shows exactly what was received each month. And March was about four hundred and thirty-one. Thousand over March of twenty-one. So the previous chart was a cumulative total and this is just the month-to-month amounts.
I think I've asked this before. I don't expect you to know right now, but is there a way for us to figure out how much? If we take out inflation. How much actual increase we would actually have in.
Okay.
Property or sales tax. Because obviously if stuff costs more, we're going to bring in more.
Right.
Sales tax. But I don't even know if that's something you can.
I will do some research and see if that's something that can be calculated, but I'm not sure right this moment.
Do we get anything from gasoline?
No.
None of that, all of that goes to state?
Great. Any other questions?
Got a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor, say aye. All right, well, we are now to board appointments.
Move to approve budget amendments.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the budget amendments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Airport board. There's one seat open for a member of the business community. Applications were received from. Gina Thurston and Jeffrey Matthews.
I nominate Ms. Thurston.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
County Cleveland Zoning and Planning Board, ETJ. Mark Allen Benton applied for appointment as an ETJ alternative representative. If appointed, the term will expire October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Make that nomination.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
East Gold Hill Volunteer Fire Department Fire Commissioners, Sue Chote and. What's that?
Chote, that's the reason I said that.
Maybe my accent. Sue and Ralph Earnhardt. Applied for a reappointment and if appointed, their terms will expire July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Make those nominations.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
County Grant Quarry Planning Board, ETJ. Jared Mathis and Dolores Shannon. Applied for reappointment. Ms. Shannon would serve as an alternate. Serve as an alternate member. If applied, if approved, these terms will be, will expire July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Take that nomination.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Board of Health, there is one vacant seat for a member of the general public, one.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Dr. Davis.
Dr. Anthony Davis has been. Point, has been nominated. Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee. The board is asked to renew the appointments of the following individuals. Who represent the HCCBG-funded agencies. Or FY. Fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two and twenty-three. All terms will expire on June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Nan Buer, Executive Director of Ruffey Home Center. Micah Ennis. Rowan Department of Social Services, Cindy Fink, Executive Director of Meals on Wheels. Valerie Steele, Rowan Transit System, and Beth Huber. Huber, Executive Director, Director of Trinity Living Center. Make those nominations.
Second.
Then a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Region F Agency Advisory Committee. Eileen Solomon appointed, applied for a reappointment for a one-year term and will expire June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Make that motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Henry Ricardo Smith, Elisa Russell, John Basinger, Don Bringle have applied for reappointment. In order for John Basinger, Elisa Russell, and Don Bringle to be reappointed. The commission would need to waive the term limits established in the resolution that governs the advisory board appointment process.
Make a motion to extend the terms.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Crime Prevention Council. Of will expire June the thirtieth. Said that. Also, Jason Scott Henson applied to fill a vacancy. As a member of a nonprofit agency. The term would expire June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Nope. To give it the first time.
I chair the committee.
Under the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We did reappointments.
Yeah.
Then.
Mr. Henson.
Scott Henson applied to fill a vacancy as a member.
He's already on there, isn't he, Jason?
Yeah.
Put him on and then if he's.
Well, if he's.
Is that a different Jason?
Don't. Don't have one of those. Yeah, let's table it. I'm a little tabling on that.
He's still on there though, isn't he?
Let's do that. Local Emergency Planning Committee, Division Chief Brian. Local Emergency Planning Committee, Division Chief Brian Keith Edwards applied to fill a vacant public safety seat. There are no terms for this committee.
Nominate.
Uh, Mr. Edwards, uh,
Edwards.
Brian Edwards. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, yeah, go ahead and make a motion. We have a motion. We need a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now going into closed session. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to come out of closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back in session. We are about to take up, Mr. Jason Henson has applied to fill a vacancy as a member of a nonprofit agency. Term would expire June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Make a motion to nominate Jason Henson.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd now move that we
Make a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn. Favor, say aye.
Aye.